Welcome to the Tuesday, September 2nd. City Council.
Alderwoman Baney, here. Alderman Glab.
Here.
Alderman Doherty.
Here.
Alderwoman Bassi.
Here.
Alderman Davis.
Here.
Alderman Cook.
Here.
Alderwoman Miller.
Here.
Thank you. Please stand for the pledge. Pledge of allegiance.
Pursued by the flag of the United States of America. Intерior Republic, where we just stands. One nation, under your power. Indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, for public comment, we have a few people that had signed up. David? Oh, you're good. No problem. Nathan Fenton? If you can hit that center button. If you could please state your name and address for public record.
Nathan Fenton, 4516 Spruce Lane. I'm here just to request that the council, if they have not already done so, consider an alternate crossing for 120 while the construction is going on over the bridge, just to allow access for folks with recreational vehicles to get across in downtown. That's it.
Thank you, Nathan. Appreciate it. Any other public comment? All right, seen none. Moving on to consent agenda items 5A through 5C. Looking for a motion to approve. Alderman Miller?
I'll make the motion to approve consent agenda items A, B, and C.
Thank you. Second? Alder... Go ahead.
I'll make a second of that motion.
All right, second. Any discussion on this item? Seen none? Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderwoman Miller?
Yes.
Alderman Doherty?
Yes.
Alderwoman Baney?
Yes.
Alderman Glab?
Yes.
Alderwoman Bassi?
Yes.
Alderman Davis?
Yes.
Alderman Cook?
Yes.
Thank you, council. Next item on the agenda is 6A is a CUP in variance 5149 Bolger Court. Looking for a motion to pass an ordinance granting conditional use permit and fence variation to accommodate the construction of a security fence for the self-storage facility Mini Warehouse at 5149 Bolger Court. Looking for a motion. Alderman Miller?
I'll make the motion to pass the CUP in the variance for 5149 Bolger Court regarding fencing.
Thank you. Second? Alderman Baney?
I will second that motion.
Thank you. Discussion by city council? Alderman Glab?
Yeah, I just want to bring up the fact that the fence issue never came up to the council when it got approved back in 2022. It never came to council for any discussion on it. And it's unfortunate that it's not up there now. And I don't see a problem with it whatsoever. In fact, I think a security fence for self-storage is kind of almost, you know, something that you would expect.
Thank you. Alderman Davis?
Yeah, that was kind of my comment is when I was reading it, I was surprised that there wasn't a fence there to begin with because that's pretty standard. I would think you would want that security, but so.
Thank you. Any other discussion by city council? Any public comment? Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderwoman Miller?
Yes.
Alderwoman Baney?
Yes.
Alderman Glab?
Yeah.
Alderman Doherty?
Yes.
Alderwoman Bassi?
Yes.
Alderman Davis?
Yes.
Alderman Cook?
Yes.
Thank you, council. Next item on the agenda is 6B is a CUP at 3702 West Elm Street. Looking for a motion to pass an ordinance granting a conditional use permit to accommodate the existing auto fueling station, sign variation, and zoning variations to accommodate all existing principal buildings and accessory structures at 3702 West Elm Street. Looking for a motion to approve. Alderman Doherty?
I'll make a motion to approve item 6B, the CUP at 3702 West Elm, as presented.
Thank you. Second? Alderman Cook?
I'll second that motion.
Thank you. Discussion by city council on this item? Alderman Glab?
Yeah, I have no problem with the the conditional use for the automobile fueling station. I do tend to wonder a little bit about the sign variation and zoning variations to accommodate all the existing principal buildings. I think to some extent, the council should know exactly what the details are on all of the conditional uses that we're giving out there. And I just can't see just approving blanket zoning variations on all the rest without all the details given to the council. I also, when I went out there, looked in the... There is an alleyway that's behind there, and they're using it as a parking lot. You know, granted, we're not using it the way we probably should, but then there's other situations there that doesn't make it feasible to use at this time. But the thing is, is if we've got somebody out there using it, you know, they're not paying any property taxes or anything else for the use of that property. So I would say that even though that's not part of this motion, that we look at that and start enforcing our right of way.
Thank you. Any other discussion by city council? Any public comment regarding this item? Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderman Doherty?
Yes.
Alderman Cook?
Yes.
Alderwoman Miller?
Yes.
Alderman Davis?
Yes.
Alderman Glab?
No.
Alderwoman Baney?
Yes.
I'm sorry, Alderwoman Bassi?
Yes.
Thank you, council. Next item on the agenda is 6C, CUP McHenry Golf Club. Looking for a motion to pass an ordinance granting a conditional use permit to allow the addition of a clubhouse pavilion and a cart storage barn for the existing golf course Country Club at 820 North John Street. Looking for a motion to approve. Alderman Baney?
I will make a motion to approve an ordinance granting a conditional use permit and to allow the addition of a clubhouse pavilion and cart storage barn at McHenry Golf Club.
Thank you. Second? Alderman Miller?
I'll second that motion.
Thank you. Discussion by city council? Seen none. Any public comment? Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderwoman Baney?
Yes.
Alderwoman Miller?
Yes.
Alderman Cook?
Yes.
Alderman Davis?
Yes.
Alderwoman Bassi?
Yes.
Alderman Doherty?
Yes.
Alderman Glab?
Yes.
Thank you, council. Next item on the agenda is 6D, multi-family PUD at 3510 West Elm Street. Motion to pass an ordinance granting a conditional use permit and final plan approval for a multi-family planned unit development at 3510 West Elm Street. Looking for a motion to approve. Alderman Doherty?
I'll make a motion to approve item 6D, the multi-family PUD at 3510 West Elm Street, as presented.
Thank you. Second? Alderman Miller?
I'll second that motion.
Thank you. Discussion by city council? Alderwoman Bassi?
Thank you. Ross, could you just explain to us exactly what we're voting on? I know I had sent you an email that it is just the zoning. So for the record, could you explain?
Uh, yeah, you're approving or not approving a PUD for the site, which is the final zoning approval.
But we're not necessarily approving the actual concept, correct? Just the zoning?
No, you're approving the plan. It's the final plan. So it's apartments. It's 33 apartments within the footprint of the building. It's the plan.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other discussion by city council? Alderman Glab?
Yeah, that changes the zoning, correct?
Yeah, you're voting on a zoning change tonight to a PUD.
To a PUD?
Plan unit development.
Okay, but at the end, when they're finished building, what is the building's area zoned as?
Well...
Residential, correct?
Yes.
Multi-family, RM2, probably?
Multi-family, yeah, I think RM2, correct.
Okay. Because it doesn't say anything about changing the zoning here. Final zoning. So is that something that comes back to council later, or is that just automatic?
No, that's part of the PUD.
It's part of the PUD.
Yeah.
So everybody's aware of that we totally changed the zoning there.
Well, yeah, you're voting on a residential apartment building right now.
Right.
The same concept that they gave you a few months ago.
All right.
This is, we changed, we used to zone things with what we call an IDD, which was an integrated design district. We got rid of that because nobody really could understand what the integrated design district was. We went to the conventional PUD, which is what is before you today. So it's a zoning change to residential, and you're approving the 33 apartments in that building.
Alderman Bassi?
Then I have a question. I believe there's a representative from the...
There is.
Yes.
Could you...
Can you hit that center button for me, sir? Thank you.
Sure.
Okay. I just want to make sure that, you know, we're approving this, but are you going to be coming back to the city asking for financial assistance? And if so, what?
Itamar Deshe, 1710 Marcellane. I hope so, and I hope for the city cooperation, but we're asking for one thing, and we want to make the project happen anyway. Think it's separate. But we will come and ask for what we... What the taxes, tax instrument can provide to the project.
Do you have any idea what kind of financial assistance you'll be looking for?
It's a tough ask, and it's based on the property tax and the property expenses, and it's nothing from the city to bring from another bucket or anything like that.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Sure. Any other questions? Go ahead. Alderman Doherty?
Ross, when I look at the parcel at this point, it looks like the gas station part is not included. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay.
However, there have been discussions with admire... They're looking at it. They are not, that, there's nothing set in stone, but they are looking at it.
So that's still commercial piece?
It's still, yeah, it's a separate parcel there.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any other questions, comments by council?
I just have a weird question. On the survey, Green Street is called Corning Avenue?
Weird question. On the survey provided, Green Street is called Corning Avenue? Is that, is that like real? Or did, is that something that just... I'm on page 126 of the packet.
Yeah, I see that.
I mean, not that it matters because we obviously can see where it's at, but I just thought it was odd that the survey had a street that I wasn't aware of existed in McHenry.
Well, that is a good catch.
Yeah.
We will investigate.
You obviously read through the whole packet. Good job. That's very nice.
I did read the whole packet.
Yeah.
Corning Avenue.
That's great. Any other questions, comments by council? Any public comment? Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderman Doherty?
Yes.
Alderwoman Miller?
Yes.
Alderman Cook?
Yes.
Alderman Davis?
Yes.
Alderwoman Bassi? Yes. Alderman Glab?
No.
Alderwoman Baney?
Yes.
Thank you, council. Congratulations. Thank you very much. Next item on the agenda is 6E is McKenney Music Fest. Motion to grant the Rise Up Foundation use to Peterson Park to set up host and cleanup for a benefit concert from Thursday, September 10, 2026, through Saturday, September 12, 2026. Also, a special event liquor license for the sale of alcohol with drink ticket sales to cease 30 minutes prior to park closure. And 3 is a 100% reduction in charges for city services incurred as a result to this event. I can answer any questions to the council, but I am looking for a motion to approve 6E as presented.
Could you break it up?
Sure.
Thank you.
So we'll break up items E1, 2, and 3 as a separate vote. I'm looking for a motion to approve E1 as presented. Alderman Davis?
I'll make that motion to approve 6E1 as presented.
Thank you. Second? Alderman Baney?
I'll second that motion.
Thank you. Discussion by city council? Any public comment regarding this item? Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderman Davis?
Yes.
Alderwoman Baney?
Yes.
Alderman Glab?
Yes.
Alderman Doherty?
Yes.
Alderwoman Bassi?
Yes.
Alderman Cook?
Yes.
Alderwoman Miller?
Yes.
Thank you, council. Next item on the agenda is, and the same item, is E2, a special event liquor license for the sale of alcohol with drink ticket sales to cease 30 minutes prior to park closure. Looking for a motion to approve. Alderwoman Baney?
I will make that motion to approve the special event liquor license for the sale of alcohol.
Thank you. Second? Alderman Miller?
I'll second that motion.
Thank you. Discussion by city council? Alderman Glab?
Just for clarification, when we say 30 minutes on drink ticket sales, does that mean that we aren't... That they're not able to turn in the tickets 30 minutes at, you know, within 30 minutes prior to the closing? Or does that just mean that we're not selling the tickets?
Right.
Which means, which means what, 10 minutes before closing? They could take and they could redeem the tickets at that time?
Chief, go ahead.
We cut off ticket sales 45 minutes before closure, and then we cut off alcohol sales 30 minutes before the end of the concert. And that's what we do at Fiesta Days, too. That's been our historical standing for all events. So the ticket sales stopped 15 minutes prior to alcohol sales, and alcohol sales stopped 30 minutes before the parks closed.
30 minutes before, in other words, no serving 30 minutes prior?
Correct.
Okay, but that's not what the motion states. So the motion states that ticket sales cease at 30 minutes. So I think we need to take and adjust...
Almost cease 15 minutes.
That motion.
Yeah, I think if you just remove the word "ticket", should be "drink sales cease 30 minutes prior to park closure".
Go ahead.
And just to clarify, within the packet, but the agenda supplement, it does say alcohol, ticket sales 30 minutes, and alcohol sales 15 minutes prior to closing. So that may have been a misprint in the packet. And then that's where that motion came from. So if the council would like to alter that motion before approving it, we're happy to do so.
That might actually be correct. Hold on.
Yeah, 165. 65. It's the second to last unrolled paragraph.
There it is.
There you go.
So based on what chief said, 45 and 30, right? Yeah.
Okay.
In the past?
I don't, he calls me in over 45, to be honest with you, but...
End of event on Fridays and Saturdays. Ticket sales stop at 10:30, alcohol sales stop at 10:45. It's 10:00 PM and 10:15 respective, either on Sunday or Thursday.
Right.
And then music either ends at 11:00 PM on Friday and Saturdays, or 10:00, 11:00 on Sundays or Thursdays, depending on, I'm not sure which days. Sorry, did everybody hear that? Let me repeat that. On Friday and Saturdays, alcohol ticket sales stop at 10:30, and alcohol sales stop at 10:45. And then they stop at, 10:00 PM is the stop for Sunday, and 10:15 for sales is the stop for Sunday.
Or Thursday.
Or Thursday.
Yeah.
Just not Friday and Saturday. Did I make that more confusing? I apologize.
So what it says in the packet would be correct based on historical precedent.
Correct.
So could we amend the motion to... Where it fits with what's in the agenda packet rather than exactly what it fits?
It currently matches, does, yeah.
Yeah, ticket sales...
Ticket sales stop 70 minutes.
Ticket sales stop 30 minutes prior to the end of the event, and alcohol sales stops 15 minutes prior to the end of the event.
But that's not what it says here.
The motion was 30 minutes.
Which is correct on the ticket sales.
The motion just doesn't reflect the end time for sales of alcohol.
Correct.
Correct.
So if you want, we can amend the motion if you want that in there.
I just think for our own protection, we should have amended to that, you know, just so that it's direct and we know exactly what the ordinance or the variance or whatever special use is exactly set up.
So Alderman Baney made the motion. Can you just modify the mo, can she just modify the motion?
Okay, I'll move to modify the motion to read, "to approve a special event liquor license for the sale of alcohol with drink ticket sales to cease 30 minutes prior to park closure, and serving of alcohol to cease 15 minutes prior to closure."
And then Alderman Miller?
I'll amend my second. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Thank you. Discussion on this item by city council? Any public comment? Clerk, please call the roll.
So I just want to clarify, motion amend to add the end of alcohol sales to cease 15 minutes prior, correct? Okay. Alderwoman Baney?
Yes.
Alderwoman Miller?
Yes.
Alderman Glab?
Yes.
Alderman Doherty?
Yes.
Alderwoman Bassi?
Yes.
Alderman Davis?
Yes.
Alderman Cook?
Yes.
Thank you, council. Next item on the agenda is 6E, and then item number 3 is 100% reduction in charges of the city services incurred as a result of this event. Looking for a motion to approve. Alderman Davis?
I'll make the motion for 6E3.
Thank you. Second? Alderman Miller?
I'll second that motion.
Thank you. Discussion by city council? Alderman Bassi?
Thank you. Chief, what is the total cost of police labor for the entire three-day event? Do you have any idea?
I wouldn't know that until after the event.
What was it last year, Ross?
I do not know. You didn't, if you gave me a heads-up notice, I could have looked it up, but I don't have that available to me right now.
Okay.
We did not bill last year. We have never billed for this expense. So I would actually have to do the research, work with finance, and pull all the overtime that's wanted.
Okay. Then I'm guessing Director Hopson, Director Adams, and Director Martin don't know their cost either for the three-day, for the staff costs. I'm guessing you guys don't have that. Okay. Moving along. Okay, then not including the $250,000 donation from Gary Lang in 2023. The three concerts have resulted in two $200,000 donation and one $300,000 donation. I would like to see the city reimbursed for all costs associated with the concert prior to the proceeds being directed to the Rise Foundation, Rise Up Foundation project. That's one. And my second question is, the new playground equipment at Veterans Park cost $420,000, with the city paying $120,000. The city pays for the maintenance and the upkeep of the splash pad at Fort McHenry. The installation, maintenance, and upkeep of the proposed bike pump track at Knox Park will be a significant cost. Suzanne, is there a cost estimate for this project? And do you anticipate the city... Do you anticipate this requiring additional city funds?
So I'm actually going to kick that back to Mayor Jett.
Yeah, so the cost would be roughly around $600,000 to do that project. Once again, it doesn't have to be that project. That was something that the public has been talking about. I did approach council to come up with some items to spend the money on. I did not get a response from you, so it would have been nice to get a response of what you wanted to see that money go towards, because I've asked for input from that. But once again, I don't care where it goes, as long as it goes back to the community, so.
And my last question. Mayor Jett, would you be opening to, would you be open to adding a 5% fee to all McHenry Music Fest concert tickets starting in 2026 for the use of Peterson Park? This 5% would go directly to the city to help offset the police costs, staff costs, and the maintenance and upkeep of Rise Up projects, with any extra funds going to other parks in the city. Even with this understanding that your foundation is nonprofit, I'm not comfortable waiving fees for the city services without this financial contribution.
No.
Okay.
I risked $3 million as it is to also put more risk on it. I don't think you realize, or maybe some people don't realize how much work goes into this, the yearly endeavor that takes on a lot of work, not only by me, but by 500 volunteers. So, I mean, it's, if that happens, we will move it. That's simple. So, so no.
Okay. Thank you.
Alderman Baney?
I would just like to make a comment of, as a community member, how incredibly grateful I am for this event. And I know firsthand how much time and effort by volunteers goes into putting this together, because my messages start about 6:00 AM and somewhere around midnight, maybe. And this is so well-attended. These 500 volunteers come from our community. There are so many businesses that get involved, whether they bring their team to volunteer or whether they're making monetary donations. And to ask the organization to refund the city for a benefit that we are writing direct checks to provide things in the city so that our taxpayer dollars don't have to provide enhanced parks and things that the community has wanted to see, I'm just incredibly grateful. And I know I speak on behalf of a lot of our constituents for all the efforts going into this. And I would be highly opposed if the city's willing to work with the organization to make this happen, knowing everything comes right back to our city. I would not be in favor of having any of that reimbursed.
Also, we do have audits. So if you want an audit, a copy of our audits, we have our audits that we can be more than happy to give you. So every year, we have an audit done. You can see that the foundation doesn't keep money. We give it all back. So also, you talk about the quarter million dollars that got donated by Gary Lang. If it wasn't for the relationship that I have with Gary Lang and pushing, and talking to him and having that relationship, that quarter million dollars would have not gotten donated. And it went through the foundation. So therefore, it's a donation to the foundation, and the foundation donated the money for the amphitheater. So just to clarify that.
Any other questions or comments? Any public comment? Sir? You could state your name and address for a public record again.
Nathan Fenton, forty-five sixteen Spruce Lane. First and foremost, I will agree with Alderman Bane. And I honestly, as a member of the public sitting here, think it is absolutely ridiculous that that request was even made. The only way in which things have gotten done these past few years to improve community parks or anything like that has come through the Rise Up Foundation. And the little bit that the city contributes to that post, post that work being done, I think is reasonable for the city to do. So, very disheartened by that request, very disheartened.
Thank you, Nathan. Any other public comment? Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderman Davis?
Yes.
Alderman Miller?
Yes.
Alderman Cook?
Yes.
Alderman Bassi?
No.
Alderman Doherty?
Yes.
Alderman Glab?
Jeff.
Alderman Bany?
Yes.
Thank you, council. Next item on the agenda is seven A, a conceptual presentation regarding the Vicki's Place multifamily redevelopment. Ross, do you want to go ahead and kick us off here?
Sure, I'm just going to kick it over to.
John Schwark?
John, are you going to give the presentation?
I think so.
All right, John Schwark is here from, to represent Over the Bridge LLC. Vicki's Place has been for sale for a while and it's currently under contract with Over the Bridge LLC and they have a proposal that they would like to share with you to get some conceptual feedback. So remember, this is just conceptual. So, you know, a back and forth conversation about the project is encouraged so that the developer can actually get a feel for how the council feels. So, with that being said, I'll hand it over to John and.
I'm John Schwark, president of Direct Design LTD, DDCA Architects. Started just behind here in McHenry nineteen-eighty-nine, so it's kind of fun to do projects in the, in the same town. Our address is thirty-three twenty-one South Route Thirty-One in Prairie Grove. And with us today is also the contract purchaser of the land, Nick Mazzio. If you have any questions, directly to him. So basically, you've got the, again, just for a concept review, the way the project is set up, it's about just under a half acre and it's the old Vicki's Bar and Grill or Restaurant and Bar along the river. The, the first floor is basically all surface parking, nothing that would be underground. It has forty resident parking stalls and a secured garage as well as ten visitor parking spaces. The plan is currently showing the two existing residences, entrances on River Road. One would be direct entrance security, the lower level garage and the other one is for the visitor parking. Above it is a four-story condominium project. The, before I go to that, in the garage, we've also got area for storage lockers and bicycle parking. And as we go up to the first residential floor above ground is ten two-bedroom units and one one-bedroom unit and there's replicated on floor one and two. And then when you go to floors three and four, to give a little relief to the mass of the project and the, and the scale off the street, we take off two units that kind of faces northeast, which is where the visitor parking is and that becomes a couple of roof areas, possibly a roof outside seating area for residents. We have not gotten that far in design. So those floors are nine units of all two bedrooms. And even though these are two-bedroom units, we still anticipate one bedroom being used likely with a lot of at-home working people, remote working, that extra bedroom just gives them another place to work as an office. Obviously, final architectural design is not done, we're just kind of here to get basic concept comments from the council. Thanks.
Thank you, John. Any questions for John Schwark or the applicant, not the applicant, but the property, potential property owner? Alderman Doherty?
I talked to John prior to his presentation. Love the concept of the idea of this on that property. I personally think it's too dense, I don't think there's enough parking for the units, especially given the Pearl Street River Road corridor there, there's no parking on the streets there. I guess I just don't see overflow parking, you know, where that would be accommodated. Other than that, love the idea of something on that property, but right now I have a hard time with the forty units and, you know, the number of parking spots.
Okay, thank you. One, one thing I forgot to mention too, between the, the Fox River and the back of our building, there would be an opportunity to have Riverwalk come through there because it's about a fifteen or twenty-foot patio area. I know John Smith was here kind of nudging me, can, can the Riverwalk go through there? I thi- I think that definitely should be part of this. Where it goes to south obviously is nowhere yet, but somewhere down the road. Thanks.
Any other input? Alderman Bany?
What does condo mean, are they going to be owner-occupied or are they going to be rental units and who would be managing them?
They are definitely condominium purchased.
Sir.
Nick could probably respond.
If you can come up to the podium.
Yeah.
You have to give your name and address. And blood type. I'm just kidding. We got that on the eyes coming in.
Nick Mazzio, seven zero one Northwest Twenty-Ninth Court.
These condos, are they going to be owner-occupied?
Hundred percent, definitely. And we're not allowing Airbnb or any type of rental in this building.
Any other questions? Alderman Glab?
Do we have any idea of approximately what we'd be looking at is as far as association dues on, on a piece of parcel like this?
Well, a lot of that's going to be tied in construction costs and maintenance of the, of the building, it's tough to stay, say, but I mean, if I had to take up, I guess right now about three to four hundred dollars a month.
Three to four hundred dollars a month? And what are we talking about as far as, let's say, a cost for an average two-bedroom?
Really tough to compare it to, unique project.
I won't hold you to it, just give me.
I would say that I would average around five to five fifty.
Five to five fifty?
Yes.
And you feel that this is sellable?
You know, I do. I'm only interested in this because of what you, you've all done with the Riverwalk project and updating of downtown and I see a lot more going on in the next couple of years. And this is a very unique project, I've looked everywhere all over the chain, I grew up here. I live in Florida now, but I, I grew up here and I've just been so impressed by the direction the entire chain is going. I see a lot, lot more money coming in here, a lot more development and I think this is completely unique to the chain of lakes, I can find anything like it. And we're better to put it than downtown McHenry, it's, it's really a great spot right now.
But if you went down, let's say down, down the river, with any kind of a similar type of project down there, is there anything, is as far as any comparisons as far as dollar amounts?
Quite honestly, no.
Just per condominium, that sounds a little high, five-hundred-and-fifty thousand.
Well, I think it kind of fits what, what you guys are doing here, I think you guys can, I think it'll support the higher dollar amounts. McHenry's becoming a very popular area. Again, a lot of renovation and I see the outside dollars coming in and I'm willing to take the risk.
Okay, you're, you're willing to take the risk, which is great.
And pardon me, I've lost my voice two days ago, so I'm sorry if you're having trouble hearing me.
What if, let's say you decide to reduce the price a little, are you going to be able to if, if it winds up in order to sell these units?
I'm going to be honest with you, that would be a difficult question to answer right now.
Okay.
I, I'm just. Because if you were going to lower the price of the unit, you'd have to lower the type of features that are in the units such as countertops, cabinets, fixtures, not only bathroom fixtures, lighting fixtures, everything would have to change.
I mean, I'm, I'm, I'm the biggest proponent here probably for condominium and, you know, owner-owned versus rental. I just want to make sure that we have a project like this going forward, that it's successful. I mean, I think of what was a near disaster over there where buddies and all that is, it was originally supposed to be condominiums and unfortunately it just didn't work out, so I just want to.
And I can add, the tough part about asking them the cost of the units and can they be less money is that at this concept, we've not even looked at pricing yet. If we got a favorable support today, our next step is to get some preliminary pricing started and see where this all ends up. You know, construction costs are extremely high these days.
No, I think it's a great, great concept. The parking, I think I, I want to look at a little bit closer, but.
And to mention, and to, to speak to your issue about parking, and again, please realize that we're working with a limited bond of land and these are owner-occupied units, unlike apartments where people rent and they have a hundred friends over at once. We have rules against that type of thing and when somebody's own, owns the property, they realize how many guest spaces they have. And quite honestly, either buy one or you don't. Where it seems like when there's a rental or that kind of thing, that's where really guest parking becomes a big issue is with renters. I haven't had this with owner-occupied units.
Okay, thank you.
Alderman Bany?
I mean, with the parking, you don't even have enough parking for a husband and a wife to each have a car.
Honestly, this is pretty con- common in condominium units right now, land is so scarce and especially land on the water is unbelievably scarce. Where are you doing one unit per, one space per unit and quite honestly, you're going to find a lot, maybe not on the water, but you're going to find a lot of similar comparable properties, they only have one space per unit, it's very common.
Not in McHenry, but I'm, I'm not really in favor of the parking situation, but my other question is, I, and maybe I missed it, do you have any docks that are going to be placed and is that going to be an amenity that comes with these units?
Yes, there, there are existing docks, so we'll have, we'll, we're going to obviously utilize those, not all of them are overnight docks. So obviously, we're going to live in a unit, you're probably going to want to keep your boat there overnight and not have to park it someplace else. But again, not every unit's going to have overnight parking, we just, there's just not enough available. So we're going to try and work with waterway, see how many we can get. Hopefully, we can get that number up a little bit from where it's at now, but definitely won't be one per unit.
Okay, and this is a five-story development, correct?
Yes.
It's a garage at grade and four and top.
Is the floor, okay.
Alderman Miller?
Thank you. Obviously, it's an interesting concept. I'm torn because we need it, yet my heart is unwilling to give up the riverfront to just condos. I, I think we're drawing people into McHenry with all the things that we've done as far as improvements and I hate to give up the commercial aspect of that side of the river. Knowing that this has been a restaurant for a very long time, whether it's been successful or not, again, we can argue that point. But in my, in my perfect world, I like to see it as a mixed-use building and I have no idea what that would look like or how that would work. But I, I would be hesitant to give up the commercial aspect of this corner.
Well, that's why we're here, well, if I can answer that, that's why we're here to discuss it, I mean, quite honestly, I want to be direct with all of you, I couldn't build this project, it's going to be mixed-use, it just wouldn't be worthwhile for me.
Right.
But that's why I'm here to discuss it with you, but those are the decisions you need to make.
And, and you'd have a real hard time with parking on the mixed-use.
Right.
Because obviously to retail, it'd take up a lot of the resident parking and then where to retail park, so it's kind of the.
I, I get it.
Sure.
And I'm just, I'm just sharing my feelings.
Right.
That, you know, we have done all that we can to make McHenry a destination and this is prime real estate, which you identify, it's on the water and, and we don't have anything else like it. So I, I respect that, but in saying that, it's on the water and people that are coming here on their boats want to be able to park and do something or go somewhere or grab a bite to eat or grab a cocktail of their choice and we would be giving up what I consider prime riverfront property for residential and I can't even believe I'm saying that, but I am. Thank you.
Alderman Bassi?
Quick question, again, I'm concerned about parking, like I'm hearing everyone say. Ross, does the fifty parking spots fit the parking ordinances for this area?
It does not.
I didn't think so.
You're looking, our ordinance is one point five.
Okay, so we need sixty parking spots total?
Uh, what are there, how many units?
Forty. Forty units?
So yeah, sixteen.
So we need sixty, so you would have to come up with ten more additional spots.
I would ask for variance.
Okay, good to know.
Any other questions, comments? Alderman Bany?
Would this project work if it wasn't five stories? If it was three or four?
Again, probably not because obviously as you lose units, the cost per square foot goes, rises dramatically.
Yeah.
We really looked at, even though this is preliminary, we put a lot of effort into this approach and we thought a lot about it and the cost per square foot would just be too great if we lose a floor.
Yeah, I, I definitely agree with what Alderman Miller was saying about, you know, that, the value of that property, but putting a five-story building there just does not seem like the right placement, in my opinion. It just seems like it would really change the aesthetics of that entire area and I'm not sure I'd be in favor of something so tall. And without parking, which is one of our biggest concerns, you know, in McHenry and so when that parking is needed, and I, I understand that you think it might not be, but when it is, where are they going to go? Are they going to, you know, go to other valuable parking that we need for other businesses? Are they going to be parking in other businesses' parking lots for lack of anywhere else to go to get to their units? So those are concerns of mine with this project.
There's no parking alternative. When we look at River Place, you have parking alternatives, they're not convenient, but they're alternatives. Here you have, you have no alternatives and you've got, you've got.
Bowlingilly across the street and you've got Munson on the other corner, there, there is no street parking, the streets right there. There, there's no obvious alternatives.
Alderman Cook? Anything?
I agree with everybody, I mean, because especially being five, five stories, I think that's a little tall along in there. And parking is a problem, the whole city has a parking problem. So, unless you come up with a solution.
Alderman Davis?
Yeah, I like the concept. I do agree with the rest of the council members on definitely the parking. Again, Vicki's been around forever, so to, to release it as, as a non-restaurant, you know, I'm on the fence also about that, but I do think that the concept is good. I do see there would be a want for that, especially having an apartment on or a condo on the water there. I do think they would sell, the price point might be a little high realistically, but that would be prime real estate, so again, I'm on the fence. I would like to see more of the concept and develop it a little bit and see what we could do. But yeah, there are a few issues that I do have with this also.
Okay. You got a, got input from everyone.
Appreciate it.
Why don't we, John, I'll give you a call tomorrow.
Sounds good.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, thank you guys, appreciate it, thank you. All right, any staff reports? Any? No, all right. I have nothing really regarding my comments earlier regarding the foundation. I just want to thank everyone for the effort that they put on with Rise Up Foundation, the effort that the volunteers put in, the staff, me being gone as much as I am lately just because I'm working on this event twenty-four-seven, but I want to thank everybody from the bottom of my heart for what they've done for the foundation. It's definitely fun, stressful the last two weeks, but when it's happening, it's definitely cool to see twenty-five to thirty thousand people come and visit your, your community, spend money in your community, visit the restaurants and so forth. I think it's an awesome, awesome feeling, the days that it's happening, just prior to that is very stressful. But other than that, thank you all that do support the foundation and what we do, so that's all I got. Alderman Cook?
Uh, we have a gentleman out in the.
Yep.
Thing there, he missed public comment.
Yeah, I'm going to, I'm going to call.
Okay, sir.
Yep.
Okay.
Alderman Bany?
I just wanted, I was hoping Bill was here, but for a long time, the lights and the globes on the west side of the bridge have not been lit up and they are now and it makes me really happy, so whoever got that fixed, thank you, looks amazing.
We'll pass it on. Alderman Bany?
Yeah, I just want to bring up as far as what was brought up under, under public input and you know, attacks on the Alderman. Granted, we're all here. We all, I'd say when we sit up here, we have our target from the public. But I hope the public realizes that we're not all robots out here and all the exact same thinking and, and everything else as far as public officials. And I would hope that every public official that sits here would be willing to take and bring out and explain their feelings on everything and not hold back as far as what they feel, as far as any proposal that comes to us. I think to some extent, it's our job to ask, not necessarily everything that's in our packets and that there are times that we're not going to agree with it and we will ask different questions and, and to say that some people are appalled by it, but basically, we're not doing our jobs if, if, if all we do is just rubber stamp something and that's basically what we don't want to see through this council. I think more than anything else, I would just like to hope that with com- with comments like that, that the rest of the council doesn't hold back from, you know, their feelings down the future as far as bringing out comments or whatever about any, any proposal that's out there. So, I just wanted to bring that out, thank you.
Alderman Miller?
Thank you. Just for the public out there, I wanted to again encourage you to participate with Rise Up McHenry Music Festival. It is, it's an amazing opportunity to see your community in action and thank you Mayor Jett for bringing that to us, it's amazing. I also wanted to give everybody the heads-up that the Riverwalk is doing their Chalk Walk event on Sunday, September twenty-first down at Miller Point. So it will be the first of, there will be chalk artists. It will be a fun-filled nine AM to four PM day. So if you're looking for information on the Chalk Walk, please go out to mcHenryriverwalk.com.org. Thank you, Bobby. And check that out, it'll be a fun day. And of course, thank you for your support for all the things that we do in McHenry. Without our constituents, we wouldn't be here. Thank you.
Any other? Alderman Doherty?
I just want to do a shout-out to Doug Martin for all of his efforts in getting the Chick-fil-A in town. I was at the ribbon-cutting ceremony with a lot of the city officials and it was an incredible event, very well organized and you could see how appreciative.
incredible event, very well organized, and you could see how appreciative the Chick-fil-A family is to be in McHenry. So Doug, thank you to your staff for all you did to get Chick-fil-A in town and anybody else that worked on it.
The only other question I got is, has the line gone down yet?
I think so, I don't know, I haven't, I don't know what's going on lately, but. Yeah, yeah, no lines on Sunday, but Doug, yeah, good job, Doug. So Doug's been working on them, what, how many years? More than a few, but, but you know, that's, that's what happens when you're consistent going to Las Vegas and meeting with them and just consistency, consistency of meeting with these businesses. So great job.
Way to wear them down.
It is interesting, though, that you say about the car stacking out there because the last two times I've driven by, I'm like, oh, we blew that. Because they're, they're, they're like wrapped around and wrapped around. So hopefully, the newness will wear off, but the quality will stay up. Thank you, Doug.
I had a nephew that calls me all the time and was like, Aunt Tricia, what's going on with the Chick-fil-A? I thought it was going to open. I thought it was, I said, it's your day. It opened. So he was going to get like, you know, the whole where the cow thing and go there, but he was really excited, so I just had to tell you that.
I wanted to go to Chick-fil-A, so I went to Crystal Lake because it was just so wrapped around it. So I was like, yeah, okay, you know, I'll wait till everything calms down.
Any other?
The sales tax that we lost, did we turn that to his bank account?
Any other comments by council? All right, public comment, sir? Would you like to come up to the podium? If you could state your name and address for public record, please? Hit that middle button if you don't mind. Thank you, sir.
All right, my name is Mark Turner, although 3908 Grove Avenue. Recently, the schools put a horseshoe in their parking lot to take cars in and out to drop their kids off. Would anyone like to know, I counted the cars Thursday, how many cars went down my street? Take a guess. Anyone? 946. It's a little excessive. Now I got a stoplight, I got a stop sign, I have no speed limit signs, I have no school zone signs. Somebody called the cops on me Tuesday because I was fake videoing the cars going by. I didn't, I had the shutter shut, I just had the camera sitting out there because I was going to start. Cop says he can't patrol my street, I have no speed limit sign. I told him about the stop sign. Nobody ever in two years have gone down there and ticketed anybody for blowing that three-way stop. It's ridiculous. We need speed bumps. Fine, you put a 25 up, they can't read the stop sign, they can't read the speed limit sign. Half of us kids going from one high school to the other. What do we do? Pardon? All right.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any other public comment? All right, moving on, we're going to go into executive session to discuss the purchase or lease of real estate property for the use of public body, including meetings held for the purpose of discussing whether a particular's parcels should be acquired. This is 5ILCS 122C5. I am looking for a motion to.
I'll make a motion to go into executive session.
Motion to enter executive session. Alderman Glad? Second. Alderman Miller?
I'll second.
Thank you. Roll call?
Alderman left.
Yes.
Myself. Alderman Miller. Alderman Bane. Yes. Alderman Doherty.
Yes.
Alderman Bassi. Yes. Alderman Davis.
Yes.
Alderman Cook.